Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Call.
Councilmember Trump.
Here's councilmember Emily Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Happy.
Here.
Councilmember Keller.
Here.
Councilmember Seager.
Here.
Member Pruitt.
Here.
And Mayor with.
Here.
Any additions or amendments to the agenda?
May I have one amendment? There was an error. I think you all received the email and error in the check registry. That was a duplicate from the last meeting. You should have received an updated list and the updated amount for ratification tonight is two hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-one cents. Two hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-one cents.
I was thinking that maybe we should move eight or seven D to AP so we could have some discussion on it, the utility deposits, because there's so much in there that we haven't had a chance or talked about.
So you say just have a presentation on it, but not actually wrote on it?
Correct, because there's a lot of information in there that's new or we don't know that that I didn't know about till I read the packet and stuff. So I don't know how you guys feel about it.
I'm okay with that.
So we're gonna move seven D.
What does that do in terms of our big spenders? I mean, is there any concerns that we have about getting this done faster than in another month?
Uh, always, yes. These high-energy users, especially those that are crypto or AI farm could fold it any day. The one that was behind did pay. The other current large user hasn't shown any signs of not paying their bill on time, but in this crazy world and market we live in, that could change. So personally, I would feel comfortable, the sooner the better. It would still take us probably a month to two months to get everything updated, but the sooner it's approved, the sooner staff can start moving forward.
So I'm sorry. Couldn't we still have a discussion after our motion is brought forward? I mean, we don't have to, that motion can always be rescinded.
That's fine. Whatever you guys want to do, I just, there's some of the... Have you actually read it all? Has everyone read it all?
I have.
Okay, because there's some of it that is questionable, but I'm good with it. We can leave it there if you guys want, and then we'll decide when we'll get there. Is that what we want to do? Okay, so we'll leave it at seven D. All right, adoption of the consent agenda? Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the action. Then it's March twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five council meeting and ratification of the bills in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty-one cents.
I second.
Any discussion? You have a question? I just have a question. On the, um, I assume we figured out what the issue was with including us.
Yeah, just air and report running. Yep.
Um, I do have a question on the, uh, mowing. Is that, I mean, is that, can we expect that to be like a yearly or is that, I mean?
Uh, to some extent, yes. This year was definitely more than usual. We had a little bit of room in the budget because it was a mild winter. But yes, if we are doing our job properly, maintaining those right-of-ways for the power lines, yes. That, that should be expected, probably to not that extent, now that this, these were the worst spots. There were some spots where they bent maybe two spans of wire, which is three hundred feet at most. It took them an entire day. That's how thick it was. This was our groundman, as well as Dennis Snyder and his huge, heavy equipment mower, just munching everything down.
I just kind of just hack on to that. I just wanted to say I really, the last, I don't know if it's your last update, I mean, the one before that, you included a photo of some of the clients they cut, and I just felt like that was really helpful for me to understand the scope of the mowing, because here's ten dollars a day or whatever it is. Like, that's a lot of money, but then when you see stuff, mowing is kind of the technical, that was crazy. It's really.
It is clearing it down to absolutely nothing. And those pictures don't do it justice. They have cleared thirty-foot swaths of thousands of feet of power line.
I did see him using that same equipment somewhere else, and it's like a brush hog on the end of an excavator. It's, you know, just pretty specialized equipment that he's using to accomplish that.
They're gonna come back out in the next week or two, now that hopefully it will dry out and stay dry, and kind of tip over, cut down some of the trees that are danger trees that could fall over on the line. So there will be more.
I think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, Sheldon can probably clarify this, but I imagine when industrial fire protection level goes to level two, there probably is restrictions on one time a year. They can actually do this kind of.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions? Comments? No? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oh, say nay. And the passes all with yays, no nays. Any special presentations? Trey Hendricks, is there a lobbyist?
Um, so to remind council, at the March tenth, twenty-twenty-five meeting, council approved the hiring of Trey Hendricks to lobby on behalf of the city to recoup costs associated with the power line relocation project in McCord Creek that was mandated by the state. A contractor signed the next day and Trey hit the ground running, and Trey will be here to present the status of our request.
Thank you. Definitely need to hear your report on how things are going. I am obviously optimistic about the chances of exchanging funding. Don't know exactly what that looks like yet, but I'll tell you what we've done to try and achieve that. You know, the biggest challenge that we faced was that we started, I started basically the day after the deadline for submitting new legislation. We had some other options in the process. We're fortunate in this, this is a transportation session. And why that matters is because legislators have piled on what we call placeholder bills that essentially contain very little language that they use later to advance their issues. They're kind of like backups to common gun stuff, because they'll take this sort of almost made bill and just stuff it with related material. And the bills have to have a, what's called a related to clause that's similar to the subject matter that you'll add to the bill. And then, so I was able to identify a number of bills for that. And one of them was actually a bill that was sponsored by Senator Meek down in Oregon City. And I went in and spoke with Senator Meek, I think the rarest day after I started working for the city. And he was agreeable to amend in that bill, and I've included the amendment, the Senate Bill two ninety-seven on the third page there. And it essentially just requires ODOT to forgive the debt. I, I don't, I don't, I suspect that this bill may not make it through the entire process. And I don't know how likely it is that we'll get this amendment in this particular bill. Senator Meek obviously doesn't have a strong interest in what happens in this district, but he's a person who is highly credible and ethical, and I've known him as a senator for a long time. And I think he sees value in what we're doing, as I think other legislators will as well. And so I've also been looking for a backup bill to take this one to place if it doesn't make it. And it would, there are several options right now. There are two bills that we're looking at, that I'm looking at with Senator Vaughn, who of course represents the district, so that's helpful. It's always complicated, and one of the bills that we're looking at, he actually sponsored, it's a, it's a gun stuff. It doesn't really say much, but it has a related to clause that may work with the issue that we're trying to address. That bill I have with legislative council right now, and they're reviewing the language to determine whether or not that related to clause will work and allow us to add the amendment that you see in front of you. You know, we haven't gotten there yet, but I, and I haven't spoken with ODOT yet. That is on my to-do list. But I suspect that they won't support the bill. And because essentially it just forces them to, you know, eat about a million dollars worth of money from their bank. So I think even if the bill isn't passed, it will serve as a point of discussion when we start having that conversation. And it will at least be helpful in that regard. We also submitted a capital construction request, which is a different process than a normal bill. It's the subject to all the deadlines that traditional bills are, it runs through the Joint Ways and Means Committee Subcommittee on Capital Construction. There are some good legislators in that committee who I've worked with in the past and who I think can be swayed to convince to take this cause up. And so that, that, that process will be going on simultaneously with any advocacy on specific bill language. That is a process that, well, because it's an agency, it may require some discussion with, with policy makers at the agency, and so we'll likely do that. The, it, if it makes it through the entire process and doesn't get included in an agency funding bill, we still have the opportunity to include it in the year-end omnibus bill, which they call the Christmas tree bill. You may have heard of it. And I've had a conversation with Senator Bonham about that, and he has, he has two priorities for the Christmas tree bill, and one of them is this. So I, you know, there's never a certainty in this business. Ball places constantly shifting sands. But, but he has suggested to me that this is a priority, and so there's room in the budget for him to get some funding for the city, that we should be able to accomplish that. Fingers crossed. Like I said, a lot could change, but we'll target all these efforts. The session continues. And next up, we'll be having some serious conversation with the leadership to talk about this. Part of that conversation has to include a discussion with, with the governor's office, and I've been working this session, watching before the session with his partner, who's deputy director at Deputy Chief Saff, Governor's Office, and he manages some transportation issues. So we'll have a conversation with, with Governor's Office as well, because they'll have to be engaged in any effort to make any changes to the ODOT budget that might include this initiative. Okay, and then last, but not least, I've also had the opportunity to have conversations with Senator Merkley's office, and I have a meeting request out with Congresswoman Dexter's office, and so we'll also engage the federal delegation. You know, something, I mean, all of it, sort of just explain to them what our issue is and what we're doing to try and address it. I won't ask for any help right now. You know, the congressional delegation can be helpful if you kind of get to the end and you're close, but you need a push to push. So that is something, the tools we also have in our toolkit. And I can answer any questions that have.
Do you have any questions? I just seen Vaughn and Helfrich, and they said that we picked the right lobbyists. They heard you. They see you that you're doing a great job. So I just wanted to convey that.
I appreciate that. I actually believe in this. This is, this is important. This is a, you know, a city with what about eleven million dollar budget? And we're dealing with a five, six-point-three billion dollar budget. So there's a, we manage there. So we'll continue to do the, do the good work down in Salem, and we'll keep you posted. I can come back as frequently as you want to receive updates, of course, from updating Mr. Bennett on a weekly basis. And if you guys need anything, just let me know.
Okay, I got a tough question too. Just to make it clear in my head, part of, I'm hoping part of the discussion is that we really do provide that service down there fairly at or under cost.
Utility, does?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, that, I mean, and now we're taking a petition on one million dollar debt home for something that really doesn't pay for itself.
That's a good point.
I don't know how much you, sorry, but the, the, the South Bank is totally separate in our electric utility, how we recognize revenue and expenses from our main power distribution in the rest of the city. And really, they don't even pay their fair share in any other ways. The residents are actually paying more because of the increased cost of the liver services to those users, because we've got how many miles of power line over there that cost a whole lot more, mainly water storms.
Well, and there's just not enough, there's just not enough people paying into it. And I mean, they pay higher, way higher rates than we do, but it's still, it just.
Doesn't cover the cost.
Doesn't at all. All right, and you're not gonna get PGE to take it. Yes. Bernard has a question for you. Bernard?
Yeah. Thanks, Trey. I appreciate the update. So I'm kind of curious, when you visit like ODOT or some of these, I don't know, more senior offices, does it help to bring the mayor or maybe the council president to have an elected official kind of standing by you as we making our case? I guess I want to make sure that door is open so we can use our agency as elected, as need be. Can you talk a little, when would we show up with you or maybe separate to, to push this case along? I don't want them to think we just hired somebody and then, you know, we're gonna, we're hands off. This is very important to all of us, and if it helps to bring us there, I think, I know I'm, I'm ready, and I'm sure the others are ready to go to visit Salem as required.
Great. Yes, that will absolutely be part of the process, whether it's in a discussion with ODOT or if the matter is, is heard as a part of a bill or in, in the state budget bill. It's a lot of them. If it's, if it's coming up for hearing, for example, we would definitely want to have somebody, somebody all come down and, and engage in that advocacy, possibly testify hearings. So that, that's helpful, yes.
Super, thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much. Thank you for the update. All right, now we're on to the parents of the impoverished citizens to share a variety of perspectives on issue space in our community. We have none?
I didn't receive any written one.
And then public hearings, none?
New public hearing.
All right, action items, adopt resolution number fifteen eighteen, the Cascade Lock Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan.
All right, my quick synopsis here, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, requires local jurisdictions to have a natural hazard mitigation plan. NHMP, Hood River County's Emergency Management Department has overseen a countywide NHMP, and the city of Cascade Locks has participated in the multi-jurisdictional plan in the past. The county worked with the University of Oregon to develop a new NHMP with a city, city of Cascade Locks subsection. Each jurisdictional section must be reviewed and adopted by the governing body of the specified jurisdiction. Adoption of the plan is also tied to funding available from FEMA. A copy of the Cascade Locks specific section, along with Resolution fifteen eighteen, are attached. If council wants to see a full version, I did email you the, the version, I think this morning. I think it's like five hundred pages. It's massive. Hood River County Emergency Manager Charles Young is on hand to answer any questions. Charles, would you like to come up to the hot seat? Yeah, and Chief Logan is here, just in case.
Um, so if I may just give you a little bit of background for what the National Hazard Mitigation Plan is?
Yes.
Um, this is a plan that we update every five years. It's a multi-jurisdictional plan, so the county is basically the owner of the plan. And then any district, any city, any court, and various other organizations, and if they choose, participate in the planning process and have their own agenda. In this particular instance, the city of Cascade Locks and the border of Cascade Locks have participated in the past and chose to participate again, which we're very grateful for. The National Hazard Mitigation Plan, I'm going to stumble over that every time I say it. It's a very long time. It's one of the foundational documents for emergency management. It really talks to the mitigation side of our work. So in disaster management, we think about mitigation, we think about preparedness, we think about the response itself. We think about the recovery from the disaster. And when mitigation comes in, as we look at what has happened in the past, we look at the effect that it's having on the community and the infrastructure within a particular area. And we try to figure out if there are things that we can do that will prevent or reduce the impact of in the last few years. So we really look at historical data, we look at risk data, and we try and match those together to figure out, are there some things that we can do to try to make sure that the next time this thing happens, that they impact on communities less? One of the other foundational plans that we have is Community Wildfire Protection Plan. The Community Wildfire Protection Plan does not have a legislated update cycle, and so ours got a little old. So what we've done for the first time, and it's, it's unusual to do this, is we've updated the Community Wildfire Protection Plan at the same time as we've updated the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan, because wildfire is, of course, a natural hazard. And we've stuffed those two plans into one document. And so going forward, we'll be updating the Wildfire Protection Plan at the same time that we update the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's a little artificial, because the approval process for the CW, sorry, Community Wildfire Protection Plan, AKA the CWPP, is a little different. Jurisdictions like yourselves don't have to actually approve the CWPP. But you are approving it as part of the overall, you're viewing it as a, as part of the overall natural hazard mitigation plan. You don't have a, specifically, you don't have a piece of work to approve that plan. Your representative onto that, you know, onto the body that wrote that plan is Chief Logan, who's been doing enormous amount of work behind the scenes, building mitigations for this part of the county. I think that's probably more than the five minutes, actually three minutes that Jordan gave me, but hopefully that gives him some background as to what we've been working on.
They have a question. I haven't done that. You all, oh, you saw, and I've had to dig you forward.
I did, yep.
Okay, so on page twelve, under section nine point two of the document, it talks about the fuel reduction products. I'm wondering why in that section it wasn't included, you know, for property owners to be able to reduce there. I don't know who to ask the question.
You.
That, that, that would be. I got, I got Logan's intervention.
Yeah.
I got to stare at him over, over your children there, so I'm looking at both of you. Why the, the citizens, you know, keeping their fuel load down wasn't included as part of that, part of that process?
It, it is actually included in the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, so we don't do much more detail of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And there's a hundred and nine actions in the CWPP. They are roughly divided in half between on-the-ground identified mediation, fuels reduction projects. And then there is the, kind of the non-mappable things. And in the non-mappable things, there's the idea of unhearthening and community wildfire resilience. And that's where this sort of project actually comes in. We've identified that the, there's a particular mechanism by which we want to make communities more resilient. And that's going along, the also state fire marshals recommend grant, which is firewise. And so we have in the CWPP that we're going to be concentrating on specific areas in the county to try and, try and encourage the interaction of firewise communities, and Cascade Locks is one of those priority areas. We have also, over the last month or so, submitted two different mechanisms to support that. The first one is a Community Wildfire Defense Grant through the U.S. Forest Service, which would pay for a person to help us to go out to communities and educate them on firewise and help them to become firewise communities. And the second one is a program, an miracle program through the University of Oregon called the GRET Program, where we would do exactly the same thing. We would be bringing somebody in to help us to build these grassroots community spaces. One of the issues that we have with the changes of administration federally is that we have less access to grants at the moment to do mitigation work. And so we will be encouraging more sort of grassroots efforts, as opposed to coming in with money and helping people to, you know, do the work. There will be more sweat effort in our, in our plans, and our, our plans are changing rapidly. But the grants that we've been going for do support that grassroots sort of efforts.
It's good to hear that the firewise program is still, because I, I was hearing about it right when it was cutting me out. It was just, and I've not heard anything about it, so it'd be good, something, something good for us to be able to get out to the community that about the firewise program. It really talks about principal spaces and stuff like that. It's really good. Pin your trees up a certain height, you know, just to keep you less volatile when a fire comes through. And then on the ten, the ten point O, talking about the, did you put the windstorm category at low because it doesn't happen very often, and they stopped?
The, the way that has it the right, it's a, it's a very technical system. It's a very coarse measure. And so what we look at is the percentage of households, or the percentage of the community that's impacted. And when we looked at the historical data for windstorm, it's a very small portion of the community that's impacted, albeit they can, you know, do things like affect your electricity system, which then has a major impact. But just historically, we couldn't find a enormous amount of data that showed that there were independent wind events that were not associated with a wildfire or a windstorm in, in the data that we had. And so the mitigations we have from windstorm and wildfire kind of covered the areas for straight on being. I should point out that we, we must update this plan every five years. There's no issue with updating the plan every fifteen minutes if you want to. So it's a, it's absolutely in the document. We will just apply the FEMA to approve it every five years. But the more involvement from this body and, and other government bodies, the better the plan's gonna be.
Then on page eighteen, you list a bunch of our community assets, and for the community, you have, just have a couple restaurants and a grocery store. I'm wondering why the hotels and like Bridge Side weren't listed on there.
Yeah, we're gonna have mutual value agreements with them, yeah.
Okay.
Um, but as we go forward and, and work with our other community partners, we'll be able to bring those into the poll.
Great. And then this is going to be on my cross. Mutual aid agreements.
Mutual aid agreements, yeah.
And then the last question I have was on page twenty-eight. At the bottom of the page, it states that the very last sentence says that however irrigated agricultural land surrounds a bunch of cascade blocks, which does limit the risk of wildfire reaching the city.
That's your massive apple orchard surrounding the city. It was obviously, it was a, we copied and pasted that from the city. Apologies.
So that's something that people, yeah, I was gonna, I was like, wow, okay.
I guessed right.
I, I, I was like.
I mean, there's, there's a couple about the copy and paste areas. Every time I read it, I find.
I, every time I read it, I find more. It's a, it's a long document. I do remember that sometimes.
I had a couple of questions. I know, um, I've talked with, uh, Fire Chief Logan previously, and our emergency operations plan hasn't been done since 2013. And I wanted to make sure that's in the budget, and is there grants or something that's available to help us get that updated sooner than later?
There are grants available. These are preparedness grants as a part of mitigation grants. Um, they do periodically come up.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, I'll make sure that Chief Logan gets, um, copies of those grants. Unfortunately, the, the grant landscape at the moment is not very well understood.
Yeah.
Um, the, the classic for, uh, doing that sort of work is, I think, unlikely to be available this year.
Okay. And then my other question that some citizens have brought up to me, uh, three or four that live up against the national forest area here. What do we have to do to get the Forest Service to clean up their area, their underbrush and all of that?
Yeah, they're, it, it, it becomes very difficult working with the USFS, um, doing work particularly in the city area, because they, there's an enormous number of, you know, they've got to go through that whole legal process. Um, one of the, several of the areas that we talked about through this, uh, Community Wildfire Protection Plan are those areas. Um, and so they're identified in the plan, which gives us a little bit of extra leverage when we do talk to the Forest Service. Um, they can do some order work. Um, but it, it's a, it's a long and involved process. And I'm happy to help to think about that process. And I know, Chief Logan, you've been speaking with the same folks in the same meetings about the same areas, so. Um, so they are aware of it. The other component to all of this is for the first time, we've created what's called the, um, I'm hoping I get this acronym right. The Hood River All Lands Partnership. Yeah, which is a group of all the land managers, including private land managers, Forest Service, ODF, OSFM, County, um, and, and a bunch of other interesting parties who are working on, um, wildfire propagation from one parcel to the next. And so that work hopefully will elevate, um, the risk to communities like Cascade Locks if I come out of one managed area, um, into the next. Um, and USFS is not only participating in that, but they're actually finding love of that work, the, the meeting work. And so they, they, there is real interest within, uh, the man, the natural forest about that, that particular work.
Yeah, at least I know what to tell people. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is thank you for all the work that you do. I've seen him at the Gorge Transit Summit meeting, and I didn't know that he was responsible for whenever our electricity went out this past winter, he got the buses here to take people to warming shelters. But you're very valuable to Cascade Locks, and we haven't been forgotten. And I look forward to doing anything that we can to work with you and to, because this is a, public safety is a big thing that I ran on in this body, wants to take care of the people, and we need plans. It's very important.
If you might by taking up to thirty seconds, just a little bit about some of the work that, um, your city administrator and fire chief and the board, um, have all been doing, which is, um, identifying cooling, warming, and clean air shelters through Cascade Locks, I'll draw you aware. Um, we have now a, um, a climate trainer that we, that's online from, uh, ODF. So we're recently offered a prison into emergency management, which will be parked down in Cascade Locks and can provide cool, cooling, warming, and clean air to a facility. Um, we've also identified a large generator that's capable of running a school as a cooling, warming shelter. Uh, the transfer switch is either very close to being installed or is installed in the, at their school. So, um, your staff have been doing an enormous amount of work preparing Cascade Locks for the next event.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, all of you.
That's all I have. Does anybody else have any questions or comments?
No. Bernard.
Oh, Bernard. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So one thing that I've been harping on for a while is maybe updating the, uh, the, the codes in which our houses, our housing and structures fall under. For example, putting screens on gutters, and then, you know, this is all to reduce wildfire risk. I hear if you can put screens on your gutters or keep the gutters clean, and then put, uh, the, uh, the, the, uh, the, the, the screens that are on like, uh, under, just under the roof, the eaves, that's where embers typically go in, in a, you know, a, a wildfire event with, with high winds. And that's, that, you know, once one, uh, house starts, it's just like a domino, as we've seen in many, you know, disasters in the last thirty years. So, you know, how, how do, how do we approach those types of issues to maybe create a voluntary code? So we can, you know, encourage our fellow citizens to make those small improvements and reduce their, their wildfire risk? Is that, do you guys discuss that, is that part of your?
Sure. So Bernard, this is Chief Logan. Um, the Oregon State Fire Marshal is currently actively working on, uh, a WOWE code, and that all that stuff will be wrapped into the Wildland Urban Interface Building Code. Um, really what they're waiting for is that, uh, Oregon State, uh, Fire Hazard Map to be refinalized for like a third time. Uh, and so once that map is one hundred percent finalized, they'll start rolling out that code that will be enforceable by the State Fire Marshal's office.
Okay, that's good news. Thank you so much for the update.
In, in the meantime, also, um, Hood River County has a pamphlet you'll have access to, which is Hood River County Before Wildfire Strikes, which actually does talk to a lot of this unhearthening work, um, that the council member just mentioned.
And that pamphlet's sitting on the front desk of City Hall, and then I have a bunch in my office. And anytime I go out and do a wildfire or a defensible space assessment, I'm going to now give them that pamphlet, as well as.
Is, is that on our website as well, Chief?
I don't think it's on our website. I only have it paper copy, but I'm sure I could get a different link.
That would be appreciated, thank you.
Visual version is available in both English and Spanish.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, guys, for all your hard work.
Oh, yes. Uh, Tiffany, so I, I just have one more question for, um, um, Jordan. So since, uh, and, and also having to do with the windstorm, are we part, since our, um, electricity is in, are we part of their hazard mitigation?
Not that I'm aware of. Because our, our jurisdiction, the city of Cascade Locks is not in. It's, it's a weird gray area.
I know.
Yeah.
We're weird gray.
We're, we're an odd pen.
We did, I did sit on their Community Wildfire Protection Committee two years ago, and so that got updated about two years ago. And South Bank and all, or all that infrastructure was included in the Wildfire Protection Plan.
Okay, good to know.
There we go.
I'm sorry, we didn't have a motion or anything before we.
Discussion. I made Marshal's Resolution fifteen eighteen, the resolution adopting this, uh, the city of Cascade Locks representation in the updates to the Hood River County Multi-Jurisdictional National, Nat- Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All in favor, no nays. Um, Resolution fifteen eighteen about the city of Cascade Locks section of the Hood River County Multi-Jurisdictional National Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Nope, you are free to go.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, adopt ordinance number four six two nuisance.
All right, uh, proposed ordinance four six two, updating the Public Nuisance Code was read in full at the March twenty-fourth City Council meeting. Per city charter rules, a second reading is required because it did not pass the unanimous vote of the entire council. The requirement to read the ordinance in title only has been met by providing a full copy of the ordinance to council more than seven days before the date of the reading and has been posted at City Hall. Ordinance four six two proposes addition of a definition of derelict structure and the addition of derelict structure as one of the types of nuisances affecting public health. The insertions allow the nuisance code to be used to address derelict structures in downtown and elsewhere in the city and strengthen the city's capacity to ameliorate the health, life, and safety problems and, uh, negative economic impacts caused by derelict structures. A redlined version of ordinance four six two highlighting changes from ordinance three through four is attached, as well as chapter eight, uh, ordinances from the city charter. So, uh, unless there is a counselor who does object, which is within that chapter eight as well, I will now read the title or the ordinance in title only. If anyone objects, I will read it in, in full. No, we haven't done it before, that I remember recall.
You do the title and then we do the, the motion.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, ordinance number four six two, an ordinance defining nuisances, providing for their abatement, providing penalties, and repealing ordinance number three four four.
I move to adopt ordinance number four six two.
One second.
All in favor, say aye. I was just, gosh, I'm sorry, I'm trying to write and think. It don't work very well. Okay, are we going to put, uh, an S after condition or something?
Yes, I haven't noted yet, we'll, we'll fix the original, sorry.
Any other kind of discussion or questions? You want to give me that after?
Yes, okay.
All right, no more questions or discussions, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes, um, adoption of ordinance number four sixteen nuisance. All said, yay, no nays. All right, adopt ordinance number four six four, outdoor vendors, uh, right.
Proposed ordinance four six four, updating codes related to outdoor vendors was read in full at the March twenty-fourth City Council meeting. Per city charter rules, a second reading is required because it did not pass the unanimous vote of the entire council. The requirement to read the ordinance in title only has been met by providing a full copy of the ordinance to council more than seven days before the date of the reading and has been posted at City Hall. Currently, the city of Cascade Locks has several conflicting standards related to outdoor business uses and regulations. Ordinance four six four combines updates and replaces ordinance three, seven, eight, and four, five, zero. The proposed ordinance clarifies that an annual permit for, from the city of Cascade Locks is required for all temporary outdoor businesses. Obtaining this permit will require proof of property owner approval, current licenses and/or certifications from Hood River County Health Department, and proper citing, meeting all fire building utility code requirements. The proposed ordinance also includes a separate definition for mobile food carts and restricts mobile food carts, which are a subset of temporary outdoor businesses to downtown, commercial, public, or light industrial zones. Attached for review is proposed ordinance four six four, ordinance three, seven, eight, ordinance four, five, zero, and a copy of chapter eight of the ordinances. Which I think I realized just now, I did not actually give you ordinance three, seven, eight, ordinance four, five, zero, so my apologies there. So unless there's no, any objections, uh, we'll now read in title only.
Any objections?
No. Ordinance four, ordinance number four six four, an ordinance of the city of Cascade Locks, establishing regulations for the conduct of commercial activities outside of building and repealing ordinance three, seven, eight, and four, five, zero.
Adopt ordinance four six four.
Second.
Any discussion? No questions, no discussions, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, ordinance four six four, outdoor vendors, passes, all ayes, no nays. Adopt resolution number fifteen twelve, utility deposit.
All right, the city's current utility deposit system no longer matches the realities and costs of operating electrical utility that purchases, supplies, and sells electricity to residential, public, small, and large commercial and industrial users. The city has been hit with two industrial users unable or unwilling to pay their bills. City staff are proposing an update to the city's deposit system that ensures the city's ability to cover unpaid bills and not place undue burden on residents or businesses. Attached is Resolution one, five, one, two, adjusting the deposit requirement amount for commercial, public, and industrial users to cover a two-month average. Also attached, also attached is the internal policies and guidance laying out the deposit options for commercial, public, and industrial users. City Attorney Cleveland has reviewed and approved both documents. City Attorney Cleveland has also provided a template, a template personal letter of guarantee. However, it has reservations on the level of protection the letter actually provides the city. A memo has been drafted, uh, he drafted is attached. Once approved, city staff will work with the current account holders to ensure they are in compliance with the new policies.
If I have a quick notes version of what Attorney Cleveland is trying, I have.
Do you have a motion first?
Yeah, either clarify question, clarify, clarifying questions, or if you want to go straight to a motion, either I'm.
You can motion?
When? So we can have a discussion, is that what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I move to pro resolution fifteen twelve, updating the utility deposit amounts.
Second, I'll second.
All right. Now you can get clarification.
Okay, so he uses terms that I, I mean, I understand what they are, but I don't in, wholeheartedly understand what they are. And so what he's arguing in his memo is that we do not want a letter of personal guarantee for LLCs.
Yes, he does not trust it. It only is based on the actual assets the person has, and they might list their house, which then it turns out the house is listed in the mother's law's name. And the, the personal guarantee is worthless, because there, there is no personal assets to go back on. Because an LLC is, can essentially be a shell corporation, and we just move back and forth.
Okay. So do we need to add any clarification for to address this, is that?
That's.
My understanding that he just doesn't recommend.
Correct. Counselor Seager would liked it as an option, council seemed to agree, so I added it in there. I asked the attorney's opinion on it, and this is what he provided.
Thank you.
Yes.
His business is when there are LLCs, that's what I had. So if I would have went, anything would have happened, nobody could have personally sued me, they could have so sued the business. But if you, there's no business and there's really nothing to get your money, that's why he's not recommending it. Anybody else have any questions?
Oh.
So. I'm, I'm kind of baffled by that going, we're going to retroactively do this. I, I mean, it seems to me like this should start from this point forward and, um, not go retro, go to, I mean, we're literally going to go to all the businesses and say, hey, you've got to give us two months deposit now, we changed our mind.
I don't know the exact number, but most of them would actually probably just get their deposit back. They've had five plus years of good standing.
But there's going to be a portion that isn't.
Yes, and we.
We changed our mind, and now we're going to charge them for a more deposit, that doesn't seem very.
We, we actually have the ability to do this now, in our ordinance. If their utility bill is more than it's, uh, more than the deposit they have on file for, I think, six out of twelve months, we can up their deposit. I mean, we have the ability to do it now. This just formulates the process and provides more options other than a cash deposit.
But it, it seems to change the process. I mean, upping it to match what the current use is, as opposed to going two months, is different. It's.
The, the two months is essentially the way our system is designed, they can get two months of free power before we shut them off. That's why it's two months.
Month and a half.
Yeah.
Month and a half.
Month and a half.
No, no, the thing is, attorney Denise.
Thank you. Um. City administrator, but to clarify. Councilman Pruitt's comment. So you, you're saying that they've already seen a document, maybe didn't read it, that this might happen anyway.
Well, I mean, it's in the ordinance. They probably haven't seen it, but we as the city have the ability to do it.
So, so we're not changing the rules. We're just making clarify.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yep, and I asked the attorney, we have the ability to, current account holders to update it.
Bernard.
Thank you, mayor. So. I, I, I appreciate the research by the attorney on that uh. Invocable, whatever, letter of trust, a guarantee uh letter. I guess if we wanted, if council was interested in keeping that as an option. Because it sounds like it's not the most solid recovery tool. Then I'm of the, the mind that if, if we do that, then they, they, instead of two months deposit, they'll at least put one month deposit. So you've got one month deposit plus that, that guarantee letter and that, you know, that, that. That's, that serves as one option that we could offer our uh our business customers. So, and question for the city administrator. Uh. I agree that we need to, you know, any, any, any major utility customer that has less than a five year track record needs to be falling under this, this uh policy. Um, obviously for the reasons that were, this all came about because we had, you know, some large customers uh leave us with a bill. So. Um, but to that point, do, do we, do, do you have a count? Do we know how many folks? Or uh we understand or this is gonna apply to?
No, we have not looked at that yet. Until this was finalized, we hadn't, hadn't planned to do any research.
Okay. And then one other thing that council may want to consider is. You know, for customers that, let's say their average monthly bill is say five hundred dollars a month. And then, so in that case, you know, if they do the two months, then it'd be a thousand dollars. Maybe we want to cut it off to say, any customer with a, a monthly, a bi-monthly average of less than X. The, you, you just, you, you stay with three, because the risk we're assuming is so low with those customers. And again, save some headache from staff on monitoring these, these smaller uh industrial and commercial accounts. That might fall into this policy. Just something to throw out there to maybe simplify this.
Hey, just speaking on a little personal guarantee, I'm. And I think we should remove that. We do offer an option for surety bond. And that's a much more affordable option for a couple, you know, that's maybe new in business. Um. So I, I think that based on. What the attorney has recommended, that personal guarantee doesn't provide protection, we're trying to see by amending the uh tally deposit for twelve pounds.
Okay. And uh to clarify what I was saying about the twenty five percent, I mean, we, for the other ordinance that we pass, this is the ordinance uh that we pass. We add a twenty five percent admin fee uh for the cost. Uh it says the, to, the city recorder designated shall keep an accurate record of expense incurred by the city in evading the nuisance. Um it shall, there, it shall include daring the charge of twenty five percent of the expense for the administration overhead, but that's not, we, do we? Not want to do that for this.
I, I, I guess I'm confused. Administration of what?
You know, there's no, no administration for going, figuring out. What the bills are and all of that.
Um, well, yeah, I guess. I, I'd be negligible. I think be part of, I mean, yes, if this is implemented, there will be a heavy lift getting everything up to date. That's why, you know. We have that sixty day marker in there, give us sixty days to do it, but once it's up and running, it'll be pretty smooth. We'll have, we'll have a system in place.
So wait, welcome to keep, okay. Um and then also, I just also want it. Pointed out that this also will include, I mean, this is not just for the electric, this is for the sewer debt. The fire service charge, the EMS beam, any of the plant, planning lights that they have or anything like that. So it's not just, it's not just their electric. Correct. The only question I had is where we've, we talked about increasing the late fee and the red tag fee. Were we not going to do that?
It depends on council's interpretation of its charter. And how it wants to address that.
Because.
I'd love to. I mean, there are people who use that red tag as their reminder to pay their bills.
Three dollar late fee.
Yeah.
So if you have a choice of paying, paying a bill, that's a thirty five dollar late fee or a three dollar late fee, guess who's coming in last? Um. I read all about the deposit and stuff where the city under our ordinance has a right to do that, but I've not. I don't, I've read so much, I don't remember what the late fee stuff was. Mary, did you have a question?
Well, I have, I have comments here. The last time we tried to raise the late fees. Uh the uh citizens, I should say, um had a problem with it because of the. The two thousand and eight issue that we have been dealt with. Now, saying that, does council want to deal with that again? Because I will almost bet it will happen again, but. Um, that was back then. Now, if we pass this resolution. This, this non-resident utility security deposit process, is that getting passed too?
Yes, yeah, this is really like I said, in, in internal policy and how we implement our options for that two month.
And I have a question on one. Um. On it says resolution twelve, forty seven, shouldn't that be fifteen, twelve?
Yeah, it does, yeah. That was a typo, yeah. That was the, that's the old one, twelve, forty seven.
And the length of deposit required. You say after five years, we're gonna give back, give back the deposit. But what's gonna stop them after five years that say sixty year, they're gonna not do it again? They're not gonna pay it, pay their bill. Then we have to go back and get the deposit again?
Correct. Yeah.
Why, why are we not keeping it until they close their account?
Especially on big accounts. I mean, I guess i- in the business friendly, you know, if, yes, maybe they do a surety bond and it's. Fifty bucks a month, probably not that much. Still, in a small business, fifty bucks is probably a lot of money. I mean, in the, the earnest of being business friendly, reducing their monthly fees.
I just think we're putting us back into a problem again.
I, I have, I have no issue with it.
Um, I, I, I understand what you wanted to do, but. Um, I just, I just, I don't like that part. I, I really don't because I think it's gonna put us back in. It'll go back and forth and more, more things to happen. And the second thing, and I'll put, you can do it. Um. You say you're gonna go back. Are you going back to like, and I'm just using these as a reference, Bear Mountain? I mean, they're not going to be, you have to do this, are they?
No, no, they've been here more than five years. I don't even know if they have a deposit on file, to be honest. I.
Well, they usually do, but I don't.
No, they don't.
They don't.
Yeah, I'm sure they don't. Uh so we would go back, actually see who has a deposit on file. If they've been in good standing for more than five years, they get their deposit back and it's done.
Okay, but again, I don't like the five month or the sixty months. I don't think we should refund it until they close. But that's my opinion. Alright.
Thanks. And I think, I, I was just gonna comment on that sixty month because I think that the reason why I put that in there is for Bear Mountain.
Or Bear Mountain.
And those people that have been, you know.
That have been here.
Reliable, consistent making their payments, that this just wouldn't apply to them. And if they got five years, it is really to try to. And it's also the statistics of how many businesses closed within the first five years of opening.
Yep.
And if they're closing up the doors and they gotta choose who they're gonna pay. Their utility.
And, and, and that, that goes back to councillor Seager's point is.
Yeah, oh shit.
Those smaller businesses, if they go under, we could probably eat the cost, but um. Oh. Abundant minds and their average monthly bill is fifty thousand dollars a month. If they go under and we end up eating a hundred thousand dollars of two months of power, that, that's a big deal. I mean, so maybe we set a limit where it doesn't go off after five years at X amount of dollars. I mean, kind of the opposite of what he said.
He said a little bit. Baker?
Oh, but I appreciate that if we are not. Asking Bear Mountain to give a deposit or anybody who's been here for five years, we are trying to make it fair to all the new businesses that you also are considered. You know, trustworthy after five years. So I don't, that's why I like it. I like giving it back because we're, otherwise we're showing favoritism right now at the offset and I don't like that.
In terms of power used, there, um we're really down to the one AI farm, Bear Mountain. Best Western, and then there's a huge drop after that. Bridge of the Gods isn't even as, as, as close. Bridge of the Gods Motel, none of the restaurants, there's a huge drop after those top three.
Alright, Bernard.
Yeah, so a couple of things. I, I, I have no issue if the council is supportive of. What council member Happy said with regards to dropping the guarantee letter option. I agree if the attorney thinks it's, it's a, it's not a secure way to, uh you know. Uh ensure we get proper payment, then maybe we just drop it. So I don't have any issue with that. The second thing is. I don't. I'm, I'm a little worried that we have, di- did I hear you right? We literally have a customer that uses fifty thousand dollars of energy a month?
Yes.
Okay, so for a customer like that, um. You know. If, if they, if they don't choose to do the surety bond. I just don't think it's reasonable for us to, you know, whatever, shut down their account if they don't provide a hundred grand as a deposit. I feel like we need to give them some kind of. Time to, 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 to uh to build that. I think that's a very, very uh burdensome requirement on a business. Uh I don't know what their margins are like, but. That's an extraordinary ask uh of a business to just cough up a hundred grand. Um, as soon as this policy goes into effect. So I'd like to think there's gonna be some flexibility given to staff to work with the customer. So they can get to that hundred thousand in a reasonable timeline, not overnight. Um, and the last thing, you know. I, I, my bias is to protect the city's finances. And I uh given that, I tend to sympathize with council member Bump's comments like. In sixty months, why are we returning this, you know? And I, I get it. I, it makes me nervous and I, if the council wanted to uh change that, I'd be supportive of that.
I have one question I'll pass on to you. What is our red tag policy? Why are we letting them get two months behind before we shut it off? That's just.
That's the time that the payments are due. The time that it's red and the time you have to pay your bill. You have till the end of the month to pay your bill. You get your bill, your bill's due on the fifteenth, but the city gives you till the end of the month. You've already used another half a month of electricity.
Yeah, so we read on, say, the twenty, twentieth of April. We process it, we mail out the bills, the first of the month, you have until the fifteenth to pay and then your late fee comes in. And then the first of the next month. So for May, June first, you get a red tag saying pay us in three days for getting your power shut off. We go the three days, we're, we're at a month and a half, depending on one that day falls. We don't shut power off on the last working day of the year or the month. So it may be almost the tenth, the tenth and almost two full months. Of power before they're getting for free before we shut them off. But it's, yeah, probably closer to six to seven weeks.
Yeah, and I'm just, for me, I'm in support of like these bigger accounts that are like, we almost just got stuck with seventy thousand dollars had they not came and paid.
It's actually ninety-three.
Yeah.
Final total, ninety-three thousand.
I, I think that we shouldn't refund them deposits because that's the whole reason why we're doing this is to protect because they have big accounts. And uh so I'm in favor of dropping that card out a bit too, along with. Happy again, Bump and Seager and Tiffany, uh and then I'll get to you. And then well. Um, does this also apply to South Bank, that storage?
Yes, everybody.
Okay, um. Uh so just a question, it doesn't, is it just assumed, I, it's because it doesn't say anything in the resolution that can be acquired by a surety bond?
Resolution just mentions what the amount is. And then the internal policy is how we as a city. Have in implement how to collect that two months.
And I, and I'll go along with when the, the, the customer will get.
Yes, yeah, this will be part of every new application.
Okay, okay. Um I, I, and about, I mean, I don't, I'm not good with giving up the two months. I mean, maybe we can give up. One month of, or some of it, give them, I don't know. I, I don't know. I mean, just throwing an idea out there.
Right, I just wanted to comment on Mr. Seager's uh, the surety bond. I agree, a hundred thousand dollars a lot for a company that we've come to come up with, but. A hundred thousand dollar surety bond is anywhere from fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars. Um so.
A year.
A year, for a year.
Okay.
Um so just for, we have responsibility to all of our like customers to protect our utility. And if we're running a, you know, our utility, which is really a, a small, small business. And we're not protecting ourselves from these high usage users of like leaving this with a big fat bill, how is that right for all the rest of our electric customers? Um so I think, you know, if they're paying a hundred thousand dollars, you know, fifty thousand dollars a month in their electric bill, I'm pretty sure they can afford three thousand dollars a year for sure.
Yeah.
So. I think that I, I'm not really. I, I guess in agreement with Mr. Seager's comment, we should give more time. I think we're just, this is the rule, all we just comply.
The, the only issue with that is, I mean, those could go under in a day, so they may not be able to get a surety bond depending on their finances and their track record, so.
And that's, and maybe that, that's not somebody that we want to be extending credit to, uh you know, which is essentially what we're doing when we're billing them after they've used our product, right? So.
Okay, and so then how would, okay, well, so. Then how will this apply to like Bear Mountain and? Uh Snyder, I mean, are we still gonna go after them for two months?
If we take rid of that five year requirement, then they would have to.
Yeah, they would have to, if, yeah.
If we got rid of the five year requirement, if we didn't remove that five year requirement, then they would be exempt from this call.
Unless you set a dollar value at it. And I, I can't tell you off the top of my head what Bear Mountains is. I wanna say twenty-five-ish, give or take, yeah.
So you, so you're saying set a value, set a va- how, depending on how much electricity they use, we require that we. The deposit?
Yes, correct.
You're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Um Baker?
Um, two things, I, then we need to make it clear if we're, if we're. Not giving the money back, that as of this day, are we still not charting the people that have been here for five years?
That's, that was my question.
Yeah, that's what we're.
And then, um. I feel like attorney Cleveland's letter is saying mostly to remove the LLC from the letter of personal guarantee. Uh, it is a useful tool when there is a warm body. Uh, I don't know, is that, am I reading that wrong? So can we?
He, the only, only time he would recommend using a personal letter of guarantees if there's. A cash payment or surety bond in place already and this would be an extra measure.
Oh, I see.
But not this by itself as our only form of deposit.
Then I am for removing the letter of personal guarantee for the safety. I will concede to this council if they want to. Not give the money back and I will withdraw my motion, but somebody can.
Okay, I'm gonna take Bernard and then we'll redo it. Bernard, did you have another question?
I didn't. I just wanted to follow up on something that the mayor said. Regarding our late fees and ta- and red tags. I am open to updating those. I'm not sure we should do it tonight because I feel like you would, you would want to get some uh. Uh, some comparable city and utility data before we did that. Like what are, what's the late fee in Hood River and Stevenson? You know, I like to go through that process. Whether it's fees or rates, you know, so we know we're in the ballpark with the, 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 the systems that we have in place. And if we're under, then, then under our peers, then again, that's probably for a reason. Um so I, I. I, I think that we should uh do that. I, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm supportive of, of council. Uh asking the administrator to do that and coming back to us so we can have a, 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 a second conversation on that. That's all I had. Thank you.
Alright, did you want to redo your motion or reset?
No, that would, it's somebody else's, it's some language that I don't necessarily want to make the motion.
Okay, so.
Okay, so.
I moved approved Resolution fifteen twelve, I didn't tell you deposit amounts. Uh with the removal of the letter of personal guarantee as a type of security deposit from. Yeah, non-residential utility account security deposit process. Is that clear?
Yeah, I'm not clear.
I'll second that.
Resolution, um, okay. Well, if 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 we're gonna approve the non-residential security deposit process, we've got to decide on sixty months. Either we're gonna make that sixty months and we abide by it, or we're gonna make it as a a dollar figure. I mean. We can't just, you gotta decide which one we're gonna do.
Because I understand. I think it should be a dollar figure too, because.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Mayor, can you say that again?
Uh a dollar figure instead of having where they get their deposit back in five years or sixty months, whatever it says there. That it be a dollar figure. So those whose bills are less than. Say five thousand a month, we get their deposit back. The rest of them would not. They would still have to continue on. Is that? What you guys are thinking?
I don't know, five thousand is not.
I don't know, I think I'm just starting, I'm just starting out, thinking as what that is, what you're looking for. I don't know what the dollar sign.
If we potentially.
That's right.
Resolution with this as written as I suggest to be amended and then. Maybe look at getting some more information about that dollar amount versus the six months, and then we could amend. That process document to a later date, correct?
Yeah, we can do that, yep.
Do that, and then uh.
That's good. We gotta get something in place like.
Yeah, and then at the same time, when we amend it, can we do the late fee and? Red tag fee and stuff to look at that too as well.
Um, that would be going over the resolution again, but I can provide that information.
I don't think we can.
Yes, that goes in how council wants to interpret their charter.
I wanted to put a business license fee in. I wanted to put a new offender fee, application fee. And I was shot down numerous times because of that portion of the charter. We can't do anything. Without the vote of the people to even do simple fees like that.
I understand that, but where we can raise rates within the electrical, I'd have to go through these ordinances, but. I'm good with not doing it right now. Go ahead.
Okay, so I've talked to Mary Monkauf. Uh numerous times about this issue, and he's willing to come to the council and explain that that was not the intent of the. Uh you know, new fees and charges. He had known, there was no intent of of it stifling business like that. It was just. As we had a conversation uh a couple of months ago about it's of fees that affect everyone, like the trash can. Where where we were mandated to improve our trash cans, and it affected everyone. The ones that don't affect everyone, if you only use temp, like you build a house, or you come and you make copies, or you, or you've.
Okay, tell you a little, you get a red tag.
Yeah, you get a commit, or you, right, exactly. I mean, me. I I think we're holding ourselves prisoner just to uh, we're cutting our nose to spite our faces, basically what I I feel, and I think we should. Have someone come in and complain to us and. Um and I think we're just gonna have to buckle down and just make a decision on it as a council.
Well, it's fine for Monkauf to say that, but you know and I know there's a lot more people out here that. That take that as a different view.
And they don't sue us. We could sue over the trash can because it was only a few dollars of money at at some point.
I understand that, but why don't we take it to the people then?
Okay, let's just go on with what the motion was, okay? So we're not, so to be clear, sorry, to be clear, we're not making a determination on the six-year, the five-years or the dollar amount right now. We're just. We're just, yeah, we're removing the personal letter. And improving it, and then we'll go back later to amend that part.
Yep, I will, I will try and get research in place to present this again at the next council meeting. If if not.
They can start moving forward with this.
So we can pass this first part.
Yes.
We're passing, just to be clear, I I I, as I understand.
The whole thing.
The uh. The resolution, and you're also approving the uh non-residential. Utility account security deposit process, the removal of the letter of personal guarantee as a type of security deposit. Uh so that we at least have some protections in place for the city and the utility. Going forward for Seeger's.
Bernard?
Never mind, I've got, I figured they got just.
All right, so all questions and everything. So we have a motion from Pete. We have a second from Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, um. For Resolution fifteen twelve, utility pop deposits with the removal of the personal letter. Has passed with six yeas and one nay from British. Committee reports.
No committee reports.
All right, audit status update.
All right, the city continues to work uh on the backlog of audits. The fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two audit was completed in this, in December twenty-twenty-four. And submitted to the state of Oregon in January twenty-twenty-five. Work on fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three audit began immediately. Aldrich. Aldrich, our auditors, provided a new list of client-provided documents. For submission by March thirty-first. The city met that deadline, and the fieldwork is set to begin for the week of April fourteenth through the eighteenth. And an estimated issue date at the end of May. Staff will present the audit for council review before submission to the state of Oregon. Work on fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four audit will begin as soon as fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three audit is complete. Now the, now that the city's finance department is fully staffed and fieldwork for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, audit is. Is set uh to begin. Now CFO's hours will be cut back to five hours per week.
Tiffany, are we, so how long are we gonna have that now, see you go? I mean, we're just gonna have until this process is done, so for this whole year?
Yeah, probably for the rest, the rest of this fiscal year to help us clean up this audit, and then we're done. Yeah, but we've cut back their hours dramatically. Yeah.
And how much does that cost you, like, dollars a week?
Uh. Probably about seven hundred bucks. Somewhere in there, give or take, yeah. So a lot less than it was before.
I just wanna say I was about to have a clap when you said that. I think that's a massive reduction. Um and just the audit tracker and the proposed completion date, I mean, I love the fact twenty-four, twenty-five are looking at being. Two and a half months late as opposed to ten months behind.
Yeah, yeah.
So major strides forward. I appreciate the update.
Yep.
All right, city administrator report. Bennett, sorry.
Uh evaluations. I had sent out an email back on April first about my evaluation process and didn't hear back from everybody. Um so I wanna. Get a consensus from council on how to move forward. Does council A want to use the ICMA form used last year? Um and is there a preference, and this was a typo, so my apologies, uh preference on sending them to the attorney to review and compile or the city recorder? To compile.
Um I personally don't see what everybody else thinks. I don't wanna use the same form, the evaluation form, because it says city manager on it. Like in the first or second paragraph. And what I would like the council to do, can consider doing, is going through the job description of the city administrator. Our own like evaluation that's to our city administrator, not just some copy and paste from somewhere else. Um and then go with that. Um. I know it says in the current contract that it's due by May. Um. I think the last one was done a couple of months early. Um so I don't know how much leeway we have or anything in that, but. That's what I was thinking, so. I'm willing to hear what council says. Bernard?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I I support the ICMA form primarily because it gets updated on a regular basis. If we need to, you know, amend it to reflect a city administrator responsibility versus city manager. Then I'd say we do that. Uh but I know that they they have a lot of smart folks who who work on those on behalf of the the city manager uh community. And I trust them completely. So I think that would be a great format for us. Um and I would prefer that these be consolidated by the city attorney. Uh as far as that question goes.
Thanks.
I'd like the city attorney to compile them as well, and I I'm sorry, Councilman Seeger. Do you say you like the form presented or a different one?
I I'm okay with the ICMA format. If they have a different form for a city administrator or city manager. Then I'd like to use that. If they don't, then just take what they have and then make the fine tune uh adjustments. For the city administrator responsibility. We can, that shouldn't be a hard change.
I agree with that.
Tell.
When I looked at the form, I saw that there were scales and numbers, and then I also saw lines in which you get to write your own comments. Into the form and the evaluation that would address whatever parts of the job description that you feel are not in there or. Like not in the form as well as you should feel like it should be. I, part of this is a conversation that we have with Mr. Bennett at the end, in which we discuss this and. I I I think we're in a tight headline. Let's get it done.
Tiffany? I would have liked to have been able to see some other formats. I mean, last year there were several that were formed that were presented before the uh. Before the. That were presented before the council so that they could make a decision. Um. This, I don't know if the form is still the same for this year, because this was for last year's. I'm not sure if this is, you know, they, if they're.
I'd have to check for updates, yeah.
Um so. You know, I don't know. I I would have just liked to have been able to see more, and I would have put her in possibly, the attorney. Do it as well. Um and are we supposed to sign it? I mean, I I thought it was an anonymous.
Not, not if the city attorney does it. It was discussed that it could be anonymous if. We had uh the city recorder or somebody else do it.
So we do it with the attorney, we.
We can put our names on it, that's not. Pete?
Just to clarify, at that point, I think we've signed them before, but our feedback isn't necessarily just closed.
Well, I understand, so I don't know, it doesn't matter. I'll stand behind what I say, but I just, you know, uh yeah.
The, yeah, I I I I agree with Mr. Seeger. I think that. I like the ICMA form. I understand, I'm I'm agreeing with you too, that it doesn't necessarily address, I'm not pointing at you, I'm sorry, I'm.
No, I'm telling you.
The, you know, there are things that maybe aren't probably included on that form. Are important in this job description, but to Taylor's point, you know, we can include that in the comments where it best fits. Um I don't think we should let the form get in the way of the process or pick over the words necessarily. Let's focus on the overall objective.
And I'm okay with the form as long as in the first page, it's either the first or second paragraph. That it says city manager. We must change that to city administrator because that is what we have. And if we eval on the city manager form, then we're acknowledging that we're looking at a city manager. So I would like it. That's the only thing I have wrong with that form. And that if, you know, but I can. Do the eval, we can all do the eval and include things that we think they're important. But I would like for councilmen doing them, please look at the job description and I'd like to make sure that. Our city administrator in his job description is being met and all that. So. Go ahead.
I just say I agree with you and Mr. Seeger, you know, change the form so it says administrator, you know.
You're good with that?
Yeah.
If there isn't an ICMA uh evaluation form for city administrator, then just amend the form to reflect that.
Yeah. Did you have anything, Marion, or what?
All right, here, as long as he updates the form. Or the current. You're gonna go in and see that.
Yeah, I'll see if there's an updated version of it, yeah, yep. Yep, I'll do that tomorrow and get it kicked up.
What's the bad one?
Um. I actually think my contract says like April fifteenth, so.
Isn't that today?
Uh the pre-class, pretty much, might as well be. Um but yeah, it'll at least give me an idea. So yeah, uh let's see here. Um if I get it out tomorrow. How about Monday, get them to Reuben, I'll give you a week and including the weekend to do them, get them to Reuben by Monday. And then get it put together for an executive session the following council meeting. I'm not sure. I'd have to look.
Yes, I'm. Confused, because it says the term of the agreement shall be in effect from July first, twenty-twenty-four, reviewed on an annual basis and continue to be in effect until modified. By written agreement, whether the parties are terminated by either party. So I think it's.
I thought that sounded like July, but.
No, there should be a spot in there that specifically outlines when the evaluation is done. And I wanna say it's the fifteenth, but I don't. It could be May fifteenth.
I thought it was, yeah. But what, I've seen it here, May. Uh.
Yeah, it could be May. I know it's, I know it's the fifteenth.
Yeah, it's not April though. On this one right here, it says that it was uh. That line is April twelfth. Oh, or the six, okay, the twenty-second, okay.
We'll find it. All right.
You can move on.
Yeah. Over.
The deadline's the twenty-first?
Yeah.
To Reuben?
To Reuben, yes, and I'll I'll lay that all out in my email. Uh next couple of items, um Oregon Municipal Electrical Utilities Association. I am now the vice chair, vice president. Not sure which one it is, of that association. Um I will be in Monmouth this Thursday, the seventeenth, for their next quarterly meeting. Um sale of surplus items, council surplus, the Cushman propane field cart and the old public works truck a couple of months ago. The cart sold for eight hundred dollars. Uh they said it was the coolest little thing they've ever seen. It was pretty cool. Just had no use for us, and the truck is going to sell this month. Um budget preparation, I had wanted to get um a orientation meeting set for the twenty-eighth as well as get a draft out. For the committee to review. Um I wanna push that back to May fourteenth. Um wanna work with Finance Director Clark to make sure we have everything as correct and tight as ready to present to mitigate any. Confusion and questions. So my thought was to have. An orientation meeting on the fourteenth, hand out the budgets for review, hold the first budget committee meeting on May twenty-first. Um and then leave it up to uh council or the committee for the week of Memorial Week if they wanted to meet. Um I don't know what people's schedules are like. Um but could possibly take a break that week and then meet every Wednesday after that.
Uh budget preparation. How much notes do you have from the last budget review cycle about ideas we had? Choring up the general fund. Um there was a lot of other discussion that we had, you know, we talked about. Rents that we charge for the, you know, public works and, you know, haven't been increased in twenty years. I mean, there's a lot. I've got notes from our budget review. Do you have those things noted and is that something you're?
Yes, yeah, if you could send me yours, though, they're probably more detailed than mine. If you could send them to me, that'd be great. But yeah, all all of that's being into account, yeah. Yes.
My hope is that that some of those ideas that we talked about last time, you guys could use some of the labor to actually put that into the first draft of the budget. And bring to us as a project, come with us, then have a discussion about that, have to make revision.
Yeah.
I guess that's what I was trying to get at.
Correct.
All right, I'll get my notes all ready.
Yeah, make sure we're on the same page. Um water and wastewater rates. I'm working with the consultants to have updated numbers for review on April twenty-eighth. Um Memorial Day, um this seems it's two years in a row now, is uh May twenty-sixth, the fourth Monday of the year. Uh I need to know if council wants to reschedule or cancel that meeting. Uh and then I have a couple of items not on the the packet here, a FEMA floodplain. Um FEMA will actually be here virtually. Giving council an update on the status of the floodplain map update for the city. Um and then a virtual open house, May sixth. I'm not sure how that's gonna work out, but the federal government has froze all travel. So they're doing everything virtual. Um, we.
The virtual open house, I'm sorry, will be when?
May sixth at six o'clock, uh, but they'll be here the week before, virtually presenting to answer any questions.
Is that all of Hood River County or just Cascade Locks?
Just Cascade Locks. They're gonna go directly from city of Hood River to city of Cascade Locks.
Oh, sorry, for the, uh, open house.
Oh, the open house, yes.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
I thought that means that the FEMA, they're gonna be at the next meeting?
Yes, the next meeting. Yep. Uh, roof quotes. We got quotes to fix the roof leak. We're actually less than I thought. Um, but still more than we can afford, ranging from about forty-five thousand up to ninety-five thousand. Exactly. Yeah. It's, again, more money I don't want to put in this building until we figure out what we're doing, but that was a lot of water. So, working on that. Um, last item, April thirtieth, um, there will be a open house. Uh, to get public input on the solar panel design and update we're looking to do at the firehouse. Uh, so we had got that grant from the Department of Energy and this was just the planning side of it to install solar panels at the fire station. Part of that grant requires community input, so we'll be holding an open house. Um, our main goal is actually to get input from the volunteer firefighters, since they're the ones that use the building. But we will also open it to, uh, to community members.
At the fire.
At, at the firehouse. Yep, yep. Um, and that's all I got.
Is this an addendum or I thought we were getting the solar panels here? Is that the same grant?
Uh, it's actually the same program, completely different grant. Yes. Yeah, we returned it.
That part of it.
Yeah, so that, that, that program had four different phases of handing money out. Our one for city hall is actually out of phase one. This is out of phase three of that program. So hopefully we can get this done in time and then ask for construction money in phase four.
Good morning, sir. Oh, I have a question as well, of the city hall. So if we move that up on Friday morning, what? What is our next, I mean, how long is it gonna take before we say, wow, we move it into a port office or something? But what is our next? What is our process?
What I would want to do and what I'm trying to do is get funding to figure out what the community wants. Like, I would love a one-stop shop that has us, the port, food bank, library, post office, uh, public meeting rooms, the whole shebang into one building. But is that what the community actually wants? So I want to do, a community needs assessment as well as a feasibility study. As much as we all might want it, can we actually afford it? That's the other question. So I'm trying to figure out how to get funding for that. I did put the capital construction request grant out to, uh, the legislature. I'm probably not a great chance of getting it, given their budget issues. Um, next step is to look at other grants as well as reach out to the port and see what their interest is. Everybody seems to have an interest in it, but how much they're willing to commit financially to it right now is a whole different question.
And for the safety of the staff and.
Yes.
Their mold and, I mean, at one point, if we have to do portables, do we have a place?
Um, we.
Ninety-five thousand might be a few portable.
We, um, actually viewed, um, um, Director Woosley and I reviewed, um, space in the school two weeks ago? Week ago now, and it's actually really nice. The back, the, the south side of the school is really nice. It's better than our office. So it is an option, but we'd have to pay rent, so. Uh, the only issue with that is then the guys downstairs would probably still be downstairs and we would just seal off city hall. And then there's nowhere to, food bank would have to figure out where they're going, but, so it's not perfect, but at least administratively, there are options. Um, so, yeah, it's, it's either we decide, we figure out how we're getting a new building or at some point the roof actually collapses and it forces our hand. I hope we don't get there, but I'm trying to go as fast as I can.
Yeah, I, I, you know, um, when they did the, uh, repair quote, did they see that there is any rot issues? Or was it mainly just, you know, membrane?
That they could tell was just membrane and shingling was just beyond its life. I mean, once they start tearing the old stuff off and putting on the new stuff, who knows what they'll find? So.
All the inspections we had, there was no mold or anything.
They didn't mention anything, no.
Hurtful to the staff.
All right, mayor and city council comments. How about Bernard?
So let's see, two things, uh, one. I, uh, I think some of you guys know I, I rent out two rooms to tenants in my house. And one of them works for the Stern Wheeler. And they have, well, I'm the latter, now they're supervisor and they're telling me, says, man, uh, we're getting busy really fast. And we need to hire several more folks to, for, you know, our summer season. And the first thing I asked myself, like, where are those guys gonna live? I mean, there literally is no place to live in this town. Uh, unless, you know, and this is kind of a public service message, more folks did something like I'm doing, you know? I guess what I would like to put out in the ethos is that if you have a house and you have spare bedrooms that are open, they're just sitting empty. I, I wish you would consider, uh, renting some of those out to, uh, summer staff like we always need here in our community. Um, I see it as a triple win. One, you know, you'll make some money. Two, that person will have housing in town. And three, you know, they can walk to work. They can, you know, that it's a very short commute for their daily life. And we're providing those critical retail services that make this economy go in our small city. So I just wanted to put that out and, uh, if folks want to learn more about that, please just look me up on Facebook or drop me an email on, uh, the city council, uh, website. My email's on there. And I'd love to tell you how you might go about it and get that started and help create some housing when, you know, it just it, it's hard to build housing and, uh, that probably is some existing housing that's underused in our community. And then the second thing, um, I've been doing my own little, uh, fire mitigation up on Dry Creek. There is a ton of Scotch broom up there. And I'm going up there with, you know, my, uh, my weed whacker blade, a chainsaw and a lopper, and I'm starting to clear that up. And, um, if you know anything about, uh, Scotch broom, not only is that invasive weed, it suppresses forest growth, but it's also extremely flammable. It has a concoction in its, in its root system and it's, and it's, uh, uh, its plant system that, uh, burns really hot. So, uh, it's a multiple, you know, predator type, uh, uh, plant. And I just wanted to put it out there. I started doing that. Um, I, I might put something on our Facebook page to i- invite folks to join me because it's just not a small task. And, uh, if you know somebody who likes that work, it's very rewarding to do community service work, like, kind of like picking up litter. You feel good when you're done. And, uh, this has a twofer in that it helps that forest restore, but also reduce fire hazard in our, uh, uh, wildland urban interface. That's all I had. Thank you, mayor.
All right.
Um, sure, thank you. I just want to say that, um, I believe in our documents by about this time of year and generally before budget, we're meant to sit down and have goal setting with planning and tourism committee based on, uh, and I, that I think it'd be really great for everybody there if you haven't looked at the outline of what planning is written in our documents, what they're meant to do. There's age root H of things. And like, when I talk about the city hall and other housing and things, um, it reminded me, wow, we need to do goal setting. So we gotta get that. And so please look at that so you're familiar with, and as well as tourism. And then also, um, just reminding folks of it's our season, there's events, um, supporting local. I think one of our places is doing an Easter egg hunt and just looking at the community pages, you know, all, uh, social media and so. Not sure if they're putting flyers up. I think it's the Bridge Side that might be.
Bridge Side is, yeah.
Ten A M.
And then, but all sorts of events are happening. Our restaurants are very event center. Oh, and then, um, and Bernard or Councilman Happy might know this, I thought I saw this winter, Mount Hood Meadows was offering a deal to folks who would rent a room to their, to season employees. So if the Stern wanted to look to somebody in Meadows operation about how to do that and offer a few free tickets. I mean, I know, I think locals can still write free, but to tickets they could get to their family to help house the temporary employees, something to think about. Cause Meadows has done it.
It's a great program and you're right, they do off that.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Tiffany? Um, do we, have we, are, is, are there any movement being made on museum collection? I mean, they kind of.
I'm waiting on the port.
They kind of narrowed us into this decision and now it's just not being.
Yeah, I, I asked and I haven't heard anything.
Yeah.
I'll follow up.
Um, and then I'm curious, who has access to the Facebook page? Who all has access to the city Facebook page?
Uh, right now it's just, uh, I and Director Woosley.
Because somebody posted this weekend, the, um, tourism posted something. Um, so I don't, I was just curious, and somehow.
Oh, on the cities or?
On the city. City government page, yeah.
About tourism?
Yeah, the tourism, the tourism agenda was posted.
Oh, yes, I was just gonna say, um, Janice has.
Okay, she knows how to limit comments, so maybe you should talk to her because she has.
We, 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 we've, we've discussed, yes.
Okay, because that is part of, that is our social media post. Um, also, um, I wanted to let you know, I filed my SEI at the very last minute. It's done. Uh, tomorrow if you haven't done it yet. And I want to say I'm sorry I didn't come for your thirtieth, uh, year celebration. I'm so, I apologize.
Workaversary is what we were calling it. Workaversary.
Workaversary, I, I think it's very, um, commendable to have somebody who's been at one job for thirty years. Uh, that's just, that's a, not a, any, it's like a marriage. Yeah, it's a, a hard thing to do for a long time and I, I really appreciate that, you know, you've stuck by your town for thirty years and, um.
Um, I'm sure that most of you are aware that the Cascade Locks PTO and other citizens are fighting against the Hood River County School District in their budgetary needs. And I was hoping that this council might support a letter at the next council meeting to advocate for Cascade Locks students and their educational needs. Is there consensus for me to write a letter and bring it to council or approval?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Anybody else?
Yeah, they also, okay. That's it?
Um, I have nothing.
Nothing?
What's wrong with you? Mary Ann, I have nothing either.
I don't know what's wrong with you. All right, let's see. I, uh, actually went to the PTO meeting, uh, at the school. And then I did attend the school board meeting and did a public comment as the mayor of Cascade Locks. And, um, and we aren't, the schools aren't getting closed down, but they are doing combined classes, blended classrooms now is what it's looking like. Uh, but there's still, the PTO and parents and all that are still like struggling and fighting with it, but, um, at least I feel good that I was there to support them and let them know that we're in their corner. Um, and ask them to keep me in the loop, so I, I know what's going on, so I can pass it on to you guys as well. I attended the Gorge Transit Summit and that's where I met, uh, Charles uh, Young, the emergency program manager. That was my big aha moment out of that was like, oh, he's the guy I'm looking for. So, um, I look forward to working with him to try to get our, where people that live here in this community know what our emergency plan is. Like, what are we going to do when something happens? It's hard to say what we're gonna do without knowing what's gonna happen. But at least, so we have a plan, like, we're either doing A, B, or C, and everybody just knows that. So, uh, I look forward to then discussions. Also attended the, um, the transportation safety plan with, um, city administrator Bennett on Thursday. Um, that was good. Um, also, we still have two openings on budget left, one on tourism and one on planning. Um, so if you know anybody, that would be great. Get them to sign up and get on a committee. Uh, we're almost full. And then I will be attending the mayor conference in September, once the signups are available. And then, um, I will be doing training with Sheldon, our public works supervisor, on learning how to let people dump their yard debris down at the dump. So we can open that up on the second Saturday of the month, between eight and twelve. The mayor, and then if one council person wants to come down, and that can be our outreach for that month or whatever, but that way we can get, get opened up so people can take their yard debris and use that as an outreach. Um, then I spoke with the port, I meet with the port every month with Jeremiah and Brad Lorraine. And they are more than willing to help us with our sound problem that we have here, because we actually have digital minutes. And if you've been on Zoom, I haven't been on Zoom since the last planning meeting I attended, but you cannot hear very well. And if our minutes are digital and you can't hear, there's a problem. So they are more than willing to help us, uh, update everything and get a good sound system, but they're kind of dragging their feet on it because we don't know what we're doing with city hall. So we're kind of in this limbo, but in the meantime, we have terrible sound as far as being on Zoom. I don't know, how was it for you tonight, Bernard?
It was about eighty percent, maybe ninety. Uh, for some reason, the lobbyist was, um, really challenging. Probably, I don't know, thirty percent of the time. And then every now and then Councilmember Happy would go quiet, but, uh, everybody else I could hear pretty well. Bizarre.
Thank you. So that's some thought, if we want to wait until we've decided what we're gonna do, or if we want to move with our sound system sooner than later, then that would be good information to count.
Um, the school district has some sort of a portable system that they take from school to school to school. I mean, just they have one meeting at the district office and then one meeting's at the school, and then they do the same thing.
Okay. So.
I was just gonna say, I, I think that we should work that into the budget for sure. And I, I'll, I can concur, I think, you know, if we're looking for some guidance from council. I, I think we should get some numbers and put it in the budget. I don't see reason why that system couldn't move to a new space.
Yeah, sure. I think sound system and all that can be moved easily, no matter where we're at. But in the meantime, we can hear and our Zoom people can hear.
That timekeeping, that, but that, that was really cool, the mechanics, right? Or if you could actually see how much time we had.
We had that, though.
Mm-hmm.
Well, Kathy's the timekeeper.
Yeah.
But she has a, a clock.
Right there.
Oh, I didn't see it.
Yeah. You know, we weren't here last week, you was.
You weren't here last, uh.
I'm missing out.
Right there.
And then the other thing, uh, me and city administrator talked about is on dump day where people can take their dump stuff, not yard debris, but the dump. That we will not be accepting any of that is being paid for, like, you have extra over your free yardage until like the last hour or so of the dump day. That way, everybody that has a chance to take their free stuff before we start selling space. That way, we're not closing early and people that didn't get a chance to take their free stuff there. So that's something that he'll be communicating as well. And he's still working on, him and Kathy are still working on getting us YouTube live with closed caption. So hopefully, yeah. So we're thinking, because it's on, uh, just about everybody's TV, it's a click of a button and it might be easier for people. And then we can do closed caption as well. So, and I have been working on getting a two-one-one rep to come out here and do a presentation for us to let us know what all they offer to the citizens and stuff and all languages and all that. Um, so, and I'll keep working on that one as well. Um, I think that is all I have. I have been busy, busy, busy trying to just get everything, all the information and getting around to networking people and all that.
Your Zoom.
Oh, yeah, that's not part of city. But thank you. And then we will be going into an executive session, correct?
Session for ORS one nine two dot six six zero two, the negotiations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those know? All right, all in favor, confidential information, so. I was, uh, shared with city administrator Ben and I was watching, uh, students in the council meeting. And they went into his executive session.